It's 7:06 by my clock. And thank you for your patience. The, is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak to something? Who is, that is not on our agenda tonight? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to approval of the minutes of August 11th Board of Selectments meeting.
Make a motion. Make a motion, we approve?
Second your motion.
All right, it was moved by Mike Aramita, seconded by Bob Mora, that we approve the minutes as presented. Are there any additions or corrections? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Was that an opposition, Mike, or an aye?
That was an aye.
I saw a hand raised, thank you. All right, so that is unanimous. I don't see that Bob Di Pietro has rejoined us yet.
Did send him that link via email, I can give him a call if you want.
Yeah, please do so.
Yep.
Moving on, the next item is appointments, which I don't believe we have any. Josh is saying no.
No, we do not tonight.
Correspondence, we have two pieces of correspondence that were in your packet. Both were letters from Robin Green regarding the new PURA public hearings about the increase in utility bills and also the storm response. So those are for information only, no, excuse me. Action is required. Subcommittee reports. The Human Resources Subcommittee has met now twice regarding Josh's goals for the next year, and I will move that we accept Josh's goals as presented and discussed at the subcommittee meeting.
Second that.
All right, it was moved by me, seconded by Mike Aramita. Is there any discussion on the motion? Have we lost Bob Mora?
No, I'm here.
Okay.
I, I, I've been discussing this now for a long time, so I'm discussing.
No, no, I just dropped off my list of participants and I didn't know if we had lost you or just the just my computer dropped you, I'm glad it was just my computer, okay. So, I'm I'm going to ask for a vote on the motion to accept Josh's goals as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That is also unanimous, I voted aye. Thank you for that, and anyone who is interested in seeing what those goals are, who may be listening, they are available on the Board of Selectmen's on the town website under tonight's meeting, and they are now up on the screen if you're watching. Josh's, did you reach Bob?
I did, he, actually, he said he was already on, that's why I, he's here.
Ah, excellent, hi Bob. I'm glad you were able to join us. Are there other subcommittee reports we need to talk about tonight besides the HR? We did, I don't know if you were listening, we did approve your goals.
Yes, yes, thank you. But besides from the, the two Human Resources Subcommittee meetings did occur since the last meeting, and there was also one that the minutes are included here, that occurred just before the last board meeting, but the minutes weren't available, so I wanted to include them for you here. Aside from that, no other subcommittees have met.
Okay, excellent. Properties and Facilities Report.
My understanding is that the work on the tennis courts is underway. It might not look like it yet, but I believe that by, it's a little behind schedule, is my understanding, but certainly mid-October, we should have tennis courts. And beyond that, Indian Notch Park, the work that we've done there to make sure that people understand that it's closed has really helped. I did get the chance to just take a look at the park from the outside the other day, it looks pristine. I'm hearing from the Buildings and Grounds Crew who have been doing patrols down there that the amount of attention to the park has certainly dropped. So overall, properties and facilities are in good shape. The school's open tomorrow, so we'll hear a little bit more about how that goes in the near future.
Okay, thank you. I can tell you that the tennis courts got another coating of cement today. Complete with a cement truck breakdown right in front of my house.
It looks very nice, I would say that today.
It does, it does, and, and I've been impressed as a neighbor with how it's been somewhat quietly going. So, Open Space Management and Acquisition, I don't believe we have anything new to report here. Lower Bolton Lake Report. Josh?
I have not received any news of any flare-ups of invasive species, algae blooms, things of that nature. Things seem to be in good shape, and that's good, I'm, we're nearing the end of the heat of the summer without too much more hassle than we saw back in May, so I'm very glad about that.
Okay, and Josh, the budget reports from both fiscal years?
Yes, so unfortunately, I, I'm very sorry about this, it did slip my mind to go ahead and highlight the FY '21 budget report tonight, but we'll look through that together and I can certainly talk about the way it's looking. So, we are, this is the FY 2020 budget report however, as you can tell from how very expensed it is. And, and as it stands right now at the close of August, 91.6% of the total town budget was spent. As you all know, because of COVID-19 and amended operations, a lot of the money that we had planned to spend was either shifted around and used for other reasons, or didn't end up being spent for one reason or another, which led to, I think, a bit more of a give-back this year than we had initially intended or foresaw. Right now, that number is $520,048. My understanding is that can still shift very slightly, but, but really, we're looking at a pretty, pretty stable number at this point in time. So, and, and we'd reported, just so you all know, to the Board of Finance that we would be giving back, I believe it's $225,000. So the difference between those two numbers represents the additional surplus that we're seeing, mostly as a result of COVID-19. In terms of fiscal year '21, at this point in time, we are a sixth of the way through the year already, having gone through July and August, and overall, we're looking at being 23% expensed overall. So we're a bit higher than we would expect when you look at the very grand picture. But that being said, there are a lot of expenses that come out of the budget at the very beginning of the year, because the bills just get paid on July 1st. So that's certainly nothing to worry about if looking, oh, I apologize. I was looking at the wrong year. Last year at this time, we were 23.97% expensed, this year we're 16.27% expensed. So please, I have the thing that I was saying before, and know that we are in better shape than we've been in the last three years.
Oh, hi, I'm in a meeting, let me call, call you back in a little while.
So, looking at a number of these different lines, you can see that some of the areas where we've already encumbered the most, of course, property insurance, that's a pretty fixed number that we're paying out to make sure that we have insurance for all of our town buildings. Because it's a fixed cost, you can expect that a large sum of that money is going to be going out the door, whether it's now or later. And a little bit down the way, we also have highways and streets, but as you look back on the last few years, we're actually underspending in, in that category, as well as a number of others. We're really in great shape. I will send you an updated, and I'll post online for public consumption, an updated budget sheet so that you can all take a look at the sheet once I add the highlights. But there's no area of great concern to me right now, and I'm very pleased with how things are going.
Josh, how are we doing on tax collection?
Tax collection is over 80% at this point in time, and tax bills are, don't come due technically not right now until October 1st. So considering that, I think we're in a very, a very optimistic place. There's still a question of really how that last 20% is going to play out and why people haven't paid it to this point. But I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll be in good shape this year.
We did get a report today from the tax collector of tax collections, and we are ahead of what we had hoped to be at, at this point. So, there's still about three point, a little less than 3.5 million uncollected, but prior year taxes interest are coming in as expected, as well as most of the of shoot, escrow accounts have been paid. And in addition to that, a significant number of taxpayers who pay directly did pay in July or August. So, we are ahead of where we had hoped to be, which is a good thing. We are still watching cash flow, and the cash flow team will be meeting again next week, just to go through where we are. And we'll probably have one more meeting in October, just to make sure we're on track.
Absolutely.
All right. We have no budget transfers or appropriation requests to handle tonight, and I don't believe there is any other ongoing business unless someone has something that they feel needs to be discussed at this point. Okay, let's move on to.
Question.
Yep.
Oh, Bob, you're muted.
From Kristen, about possible additional funds may be required to produce, to covetate an interim because of the lack of
I I know Kristen has shared with the Cash Flow Committee that there have been some budget overruns already at the Board of Ed for things like maintenance and cleaning supplies, and also supplies needed to make the classroom safe. At this point, I believe she's been able to handle those internally with other savings that they've located, but I wouldn't be surprised if there's an additional ask that comes to the Board of Finance.
Thank you.
Yep. Item 8A, new business, consider and possibly act on adopting a resolution in support of the Heritage Farm Commission Survey and Planning Grant. Arlene or Rhea, would you like to step in here and bring the board up to speed on what's going on?
Arlene, are you there? Oh, there you are, okay.
Why, why don't you take it since you're the author?
Okay. Well, I, there was a lot of help on this grant, but this, this survey and planning grant is a preliminary grant for a study of the farm to pick up from where we are now and to move it forward to a level where the buildings can be inhabited and generate some income to be self-sustaining. So we had, the, the Board of Selectmen had already approved the business plan for the Bolton Heritage Farm, so we took that plan and then we discussed continuing with the Nelson Edwards Group, who had, who had done had the, had completed the first survey. And we've got a proposal, a very specific proposal from them, and they met with us, the whole group with Josh and Sandy and Arlene and other members of the Bolton Harry's Farm Commission to discuss the needs of the group and the farm development. So we have a proposal that is going to go to the State Historic Preservation Office. It's for $20,000, and it does not need to have matching funds right now if we get the proposal submitted in a very timely fashion. Arlene, is it November?
I'm sorry, I forget the date.
Okay, I believe it's, if we, we need to get the grant in shortly, because we'll be able to waive the, the matching funds. So we're asking for $20,000, which is the limit. And then, we also said that in this grant, they really are pushing for a archaeological study of the, the grounds around the farm. And I think that's very important for us to get the grant in the first place and to do anything further. So I, so that would be, they're saying it would be by about $5,000 in addition to the $20,000 for the study, and that would have to come from the town at this point. So we have a, a proposal, and it's pretty much, there are a couple of corrections that I see, but basically, it's about seven, it's 70 some odd pages, 75 pages, and looks like this. And so we're asking for the approval of the Board of Selectmen to submit this grant, grant to the State Historic Preservation Office.
I have a question.
I have one too.
Well, several, but one of them is, a part of this study seems to be pretty redundant, because we, practically, we've had engineering studies done on the building and, and recommendations of what it would take to make the building suitable for various events, and even what it would take to bring it to point A, point B, point C, and some relative cost to do that. So I'm not sure what, what this what's different about this grant than, than what we, we, we already know, but we don't have funds to do. I mean, it, it's good to, to find a study, but here we are in a position where we're, we're talking at this stage of the game to make that building usable for what, I'm assuming your intended goal is, we're, we're, it's a, a very significant cash investment into it, we know that. You maybe tweaked the number, but why are we doing that again? And I understand the, the other portion of it, which would be, you're looking at the site or whatever, would they be doing diggings or, and is that, is that what that is, to look around and see what's there, and I'm not sure what that, what the other portion does, so I guess it's a pretty broad set of questions, I'm sorry to be so.
No, Rhea, I'd like to take some of that about the history.
Okay, one thing though, I just, I forgot to add something, so I just want to say one thing. This particular grant is all, I mean, I, I'm not going to answer your question in detail, but I just want to add something that I should have stated before. This grant is a preliminary grant, once the study is done, then we're able to apply for a more significant grant for the preservation activities to complete the projects that are necessary to make these buildings functional.
Wow.
And part of that is really extends to, to, to accept, I mean, it's, it's a very broad, and I don't think the first, the first survey grant really expanded that far. So I'll let Sandy and Arlene pick up from there.
No, that, that, that's a good explanation, Rhea. The first study that was done was with, with the Survey and Planning Grant, was pretty much a condition survey, and then in that condition survey identified immediate needs and set out a urgent, should be done, and would be nice to do list of steps to stabilize the property, and most of those actually, all of the must-be-dones and a fair number of the should-be-dones have been completed. None of the, gee, that would be wonderful to be done, have been done. And at this point, there, nothing is anywhere near shovel-ready, nor do we know exactly at this point what it would take to, from a building perspective and a state building code perspective, to take the steps necessary to make that building usable, nor do we know what the State Historic Preservation Office would allow us to do, other than the fact that they've said, we will not allow you to insulate the entire building. So, Mike?
Yeah, along with how you just ended that, I, I, I listened to you cringe when we were talking about the barn and the historic hand from the Historic Preservations Group that, that was on your shoulder with everything you tried to do to improve the barn. And I, every time I hear this word Historic Preservation Office, I get cringes now thinking about things like, we can't insulate a building and we have to use specific nails and screws and things, and I just wonder what kind of strings this all is coming with. And, you know, yes, it'll tell us what we need to do, and then maybe allow us to apply for some money, but like the barn, the money probably didn't cover the additional type of hardware we had to buy, or, you know, it, it just worries me that we we, it might be cheaper for us to do, do things on our own and leave them out of it, and less, less cumbersome for us, so I, I just have some serious concerns whenever we get involved in Historic Preservation Office.
Well, and I would agree with you, Mike, based on my past experience with them, however, I think it's important to remember that this is an opportunity today to get $20,000 of state funds to take us one step closer to our, our ultimate goal of being able to use the barn for some sort of public assembly. And the, at this point, I think there is some merit to the archaeological study that's been requested or suggested at this point. But that would have to be funded by the town. Now, there is money in the Heritage Farm Fund to cover that expenditure. If, in fact, we do get this grant and we decide to go forward to it. But there's a real piece of me that hates to leave free, unmatched state money that I contributed through my taxes to the state of Connecticut, sitting there on the table for somebody else to use in their town. So.
This is, and just to make it clear, you just sort of touched on it, that if, if you submit the application within a certain period, you're not required to match in that, it's, it's a flat-out grant, non-matching grant, correct?
That's correct, and it doesn't, this survey and planning grant does not have any of the requirements that they get to put restriction on the property just for giving us this $20,000.
Wow, thank you for that, that was, that was my, that was my concern, I'm sure it's Mike's concern as well.
Yeah, you know, if, if you feel comfortable with this, Sandy, you're, you're the one that put up with the most headaches from the last one. If, if, if you feel comfortable going into this, I'll go along with it, just, you know, I, it just worries me, and if you're comfortable, I'll, I'll buy into it.
I'm comfortable with this one, I'm not sure that I'm ready to say I'm comfortable with step two, which would be the implementation. But things change on a every couple of month basis here, so.
You're, you're more into this than I am, and you've suffered a lot with the last one, so if you're willing, I'm, I'm on board.
You don't like.
Therefore, I will move the rear proof, so I will forward with it.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been moved by Bob Di Pietro and seconded by Mike Aramita that we approve the draft resolution. It, and I just want to make, point out that as part of this resolution, this is authorizing me to sign all necessary agreements and take all necessary actions to allow the town's participation in the grant program. Is there any further discussion?
I just want to thank Rhea for all the work she did, and my, how about that massive paper? That's a lot of hours and a lot of time, but thank you for your efforts, we appreciate.
Yes, very much so.
Yes, thank you, Rhea. All right, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor of the resolution, please signify by saying aye.
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 I believe that's unanimous. Thank you. And if there's anything that you need from us, Rhea and Arlene, please work with Josh, and he knows how to get my signature. So.
Okay, and thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Your support is really invaluable, thank you.
All right, item 8B. I think we are going to just postpone action on this until after the next Human Resource Subcommittee meeting. And item 8C, we already acted on under Subcommittee Reports, so we will move on to 8D, which is any other new business. I don't believe there is any at this point.
Sandy, the cemeteries, are we going to address them in some way, shape, or form in the near future?
Are you talking about?
The damage and, and problems we're still apparently having with our contractor?
Josh, are you, you here?
Yes, I am.
Okay, can you just talk about that, because you've had the conversations with the cemetery provider?
Absolutely, so, the US Cemetery Services, I did reach out to them after I was contacted. Well, not necessarily directly, but we, we found communication online from Jim Clark, and, and we saw that there was certainly an issue down there recently. So after having communications with the owner, they were very quick, the next day they did get down there, and they did not only fix and reset the headstone, but they also, it sounds like, resupplied the base to a degree to make sure that that doesn't happen again. My, I have promises, and, and of course, I My, I have promises and, and of course, I can't really speak to anything beyond this, but I have promises from the owner that the crew that was down there is going to be spoken with about the care that they spend with the lawn. And I also have an offer now from the owner to help with the repairs to some of the much older headstones. I'm talking eighteen hundreds and beyond headstones that exist there that, that weren't necessarily the target of some of the social media postings a couple of weeks ago. So we've had a positive response to a degree. Of course, it shouldn't happen in the first place. What we have right now is a contract that extends through the end of, well, really the middle of this fall, but the end of the growing season. And at that point in time, we, I can certainly make sure that an RFP is put out to see if there is a different service that would like to be working with us and, and might be a little bit more readily professional and careful with their equipment. Or we could decide that we really appreciate what they've, the changes that they've made this year and, and decide not to put the RFP out. But in any case, we have the contract signed through the end of the growing season. So in the next couple of months, that's probably a good conversation, one way or another, that we should have and decide.
I think we should look at alternatives. I mean, we've had on and off issues for, for some time. I appreciate his efforts, but he also knows damn well that his contract is running out. And if he wants to stay, he's going to make sure he does a good job. But I want to make sure that the job is done well after he, that they, if, if they get an extended contract. That's, that's the key issue here. Not what you're doing right now to make sure you're going to get the contract expanded. What you're going to do should you get it expanded. So maybe looking, I, and I honestly don't know what's available out there. I'm assuming there's some, but it's, that's something way over my pay grade is what's out there. But I, I, I would think it'd be worth putting out a request for folks to come in and bid on it.
Yeah, with, with more extensive performance requirements.
Well, I, I think our next contract at a minimum will need some performance standards set out so that it's an expectation that they do more than sell grave sites, collect money and dig holes and mow grass. There has to be some responsibility in there. And I've had several people reach out to me and offer to do the mowing. And if it was just the mowing, then our guys could probably handle that. But it goes way beyond that to meeting with the families and selling the grave sites and digging the graves and filling the graves and seeding the graves. So it's, it's much, much more than a lawn mowing job. So.
Okay.
I do agree that we do need some performance standards built into the contract or the ability to terminate.
Yes.
Can we split out the responsibility then? Like have we do the lawn mowing ourselves, but have a company do the other things? Because that's mostly what we've had the problems with, right? Or has it been other stuff too?
There have been a plethora of issues, everything from someone reselling a grave site that was already sold to lawn mowing, to removing brush, to not storing the, the removed debris properly. So it's, you know, the list goes on and on. But I don't know that there are too many companies out there who do that. But then again, I have, truly have not looked, so.
Okay.
If, I, I think at a minimum, we do need to be talking about an RFP process in the next month or two.
Yes.
Okay, our Sustainable Connecticut report has been filed. Patrice did a yeoman's effort to, assisted by lots of people to get that done. And the Sustainable Connecticut Committee has worked hard as a group to come up with the items we thought we could respond to. So I'm glad about that. We will be continuing the Sustainable CT Committee. Patrice has told us that she believes we have enough actions in process that if we continue on the road we're on, we should qualify for the next level with the next round. So we'll keep that committee going. If nothing else, it did provide some good community education and community involvement. The school has gone from plastics to disposable sporks. They have stopped using trays. They have, and one of our interns this summer did a great video that's out on the town website on food waste recycling. So if you haven't seen that, take a look at it. I think it's still available from the homepage on the town's website. So I think we've had some good things going on there. Today, the superintendent of schools announced to the school family, the school community that there is a positive COVID case within the school community. She's had discussions with our health director, Rob Miller, from Eastern Highlands Health District. And it's been determined that that was a case of community spread. The, rather than school community spread. And that individual has been quarantined and they are in the process of contact tracing. So if you or your family has been in contact with that individual and that individual shares that information, they will reach out directly to you. School starts tomorrow, as Josh said earlier. And at this point, there is no intention or need, according to our health director, to postpone that opening of school at this point. So, let's see, I had something else I wanted to mention to you, and it slipped my mind. It'll come back.
School starts Thursday, doesn't it?
Huh?
School starts Thursday.
Tomorrow, I believe.
Tomorrow, yes. Eight, eight K goes tomorrow.
It's the high school that, that, it's a virtual Wednesday than they have the other day.
Well, no, tomorrow will be, tomorrow's A through K, and then Thursday is whatever letter comes. After, after K, at the end of the alphabet, and then.
There's two first days.
Yes.
Well, that's what it is. Oh, good.
And then Friday this week is virtual, correct, Kim?
Yes.
They really turned it around today.
Yeah, and then next week, it's Monday, Tuesday with the beginning of the alphabet. Thursday, everybody home on Wednesday and Thursday, Friday.
Next week it is, next week is Tuesday, Wednesday.
Oh, that's right.
Because Monday's a holiday.
I don't envy parents trying to keep track of, I have enough trouble remembering what day it is when I wake up, trying to remember if I had to get, put a kid on a bus would drive me crazy.
And grandparents are in that now too, because parents that are, that are working again, and oh God, it's.
Big dots on the calendar, Mike.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
All right, my other thought that I wanted to share with you hasn't come back. Josh, do you have anything to share with you? I think the goals are.
Yeah, the goal, goals are a little bit of a moot point at this point in time. What I will say is that something that we discussed quite a bit over the course of the budget discussions was my desire to continue having an intern come in and work with not only the Selectmen's Office, but across different town departments. And I'm very happy to say that we do have a graduate student who's joining us from Yukon's Master Public Administration Program. His name is Kevin Fitzgerald. He had his first day in the office yesterday. He's going to be working with me. So when I'm in the office or when I'm working virtually, he'll be on that same schedule. And he's in the office fifteen hours a week. And my goal with him is to make sure that he has at least one project, big or small, under his belt in each department before he leaves. And also that, that he's really taking some of the projects that we've been contemplating that have been, some of those, gosh, that would be, that would be great, that would be awesome, types of projects and, and really get them started or take them to the next level. So if you have thoughts on items that you really wanted to see, have some momentum. If you are just, if you have any projects that you have in mind, please feel free to pass them along. I'm trying to create a master list of, from each department, the projects that they'd really like some assistance with him from. And once I have that list in place, well, we'll make sure that everything's addressed in as timely a manner as possible. I know that the Town Clerk's Office will really appreciate his help come the elect, come election time, which is pretty soon. But there are some other projects that really won't kick off until the winter or the spring.
Is he, is he salaried or is he, is he paid by a university or what's the story?
It's, it's an interesting arrangement. So what we do is with the money that the board approved as part of the budget process, we give that money as a lump sum to Yukon through one invoice. And Yukon pays him out on an hourly basis for the work that's conducted. So he will have to be sending in time cards to us, just like he's any other employee. But really, that's to keep track of the hours. We report it back to Yukon to verify that he should be paid out of the state ultimately is, is the one who's cutting the check for his pay.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, and I just remembered what it was that I wanted to share with you. And that is that our new daytime resident trooper, Dan Richmond, started last Friday. He is out and about around town. He's on a five on, three off schedule. So, and it is not the same five and three that Brian is on. So we will always have a resident trooper either a day or an evening on duty in town. So. I think that's it. Famous motion, it's been made. Bob Mora moved, we adjourn.
Come on, somebody.
Second.
Mike seconded. All right, all those in favor of adjournment?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right.
Aye.
Watch your email for a date from Josh for a potential Human Resources meeting, probably next week or the week after. All right, night all. Good to see you.